Welcome to another episode of Key Biscayne Stories where neighbors meet neighbors. Today, we have Charles Collins. He's a Key Biscayne neighbor for nine years and he's running for village council. So we're gonna get, we're gonna get to know him and his story. Welcome, Charles. How are you doing today?
Very well. How are you all? Thanks for having us.
We're excited. We're excited. So we're gonna ask you an icebreaker to get started.
So what is the best piece of ice you've ever been given?
A lawyer who specializes in incorporations once told me, if you're gonna be, when you start something, you're gonna be an outlier, you're gonna be a disruptor, and only your friends are gonna support you. But if you stick with it and it's a valid initiative, you don't have to do it yourself. You have to, to depend that others will come behind you that are more qualified and move your initiative forward. So basically, in politics, you don't have to do it alone. All you need to do is find people, like-minded people, and the initiative will take a life of its own.
Tell us something about yourself most people don't know.
Probably related to the key, I think most people don't realize or don't know that I was the stage manager and the DJ for the 4th of July Key Biscayne Parade for almost 30 years, starting in 1992. To this day, Tim Stickney knows me. By recognition, he still doesn't know my name. I was completely, it was my favorite gig of all the shows I did. We did like, at one point, we were up to 400 shows a year. But somehow, Key Biscayne, that parade, that, that one day, we got, you know, the old roadie song, "I was the first to come and the last to leave." We'd get over here at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, start setting it up. Can't remember her name, but her and her husband would show up with their Cadillac full of refreshments. And Tim would show up and we'd do the parade and then everybody'd go off and have a party and then we'd break down the set and leave. And it was just, we used to do like six shows on, on 4th of July. That was, anyway, it was a cool, that was back in the eighties, so things were fun.
Awesome. Cool. So I also wanna add that one of the things that we like to do with these shows where we interview the candidates for village council is an opportunity for, for our neighbors now to get to know you a little more, some of your backgrounds and then what have you done, what are your goals? What is the most important thing in your life today?
Well, I think it's 72 have sort of reached that Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So most of the important things, I hope, are taken care of. For the next 50 days, the most important thing in my life is an election.
I can imagine it's, even, even for such a small community, it must be challenging to, to run for office and to go out there. And it's different, I think, a little bit.
You're saying, is there any difference between running a national campaign as opposed to running for village council member? Well, I've done both, yeah. There's, there's differences and there, there's similarities. The similarities is the strategy is always the same. It's name recognition, it's getting out, it's getting exposure. The difference is here, people know you per, a majority of the voters know you personally. I mean, if you've grown up here, you've been involved with politics or, you know, just living. It's so small that you can't get away with pontificating, you know? People know who you really are. So in a big campaign, everybody works on spin and trying to massage the message. Here, you're gonna see the guy at the club after us. You're not gonna get away with that. If you're gonna take a position, you better be able to defend it to your friends and neighbors and not trust that you can massage it through message, through a media.
So how did you end up in the key?
Well, my family got here a long time ago. This was a destination before there was a bridge. So, you know, it was like you'd hang out on the boat. When I was born, my, my personal backstory is when I was born, this was the de facto beach and, and celebration. So, um, yeah, literally, I'm three months old. I'm out here doing, you know, beach things. Also, remember Jamaica Inn? Were you around for that? That was the go-to family restaurant. We would come out, anybody's birthday or anniversary, it was either a La Cita Tea Room in the Grove, which is long gone, or, or the Jamaican Inn is on the key. And then somewhere around the seventies, I told the story earlier, but somewhere around the seventies, I had an apartment out here for a while. And then I left and went off to college. And then, like I said, I, I worked here a lot. We did all the, all the 4th of July parades. We did the tennis tournaments. Do you remember Superstars back in the eighties? We had, oh, they had this thing in the eighties called Superstars. They'd bring all these A-listers in that were basketball or golf stars, whatever. And then they'd make them do these ridiculous, like, long jumps and things. Anyway, it was a national TV show and it broadcast live from the island. So that was, you know, on and off connections, literally, since I was born.
The most, I mean, when I first arrived, I was 10 years old and I remember there was a KFC. There was a KFC right next, right next to the Key Executive. And then the Key Colony Plaza was not here. So it was just an empty lot where people would play soccer. That was me when I was, when I was visiting first.
We have completely different, well, anyway, that's sort of where we're heading on this whole election. Is that island gonna be, is even the island gonna be here in another three generations?
Got it.
So tell us what inspired you to run for office?
The thing I wanted to focus on was I didn't really run for office. I had a private argument with the village attorney about the Florida Legislature mandating ethics for all state workers. It's always been for state and county, but they wanted to expand it to Key Biscayne. And the village attorney, well, his law firm, had orchestrated a class action suit to block it. And as I mentioned, I spent a long time in government and I am really focused on ethics. And so I thought if I challenged him personally, and not personally, but if I personally challenged the law by filing to run for the village commission under this waiver, it would bring it to a head. And so I did. The rule was that the state legislature came down and said, everyone has to file full financial disclosure. The governor, the legislature, school boards, all are covered under a financial disclosure law. About 30% of the complaints coming into Tallahassee were from ethics complaints from municipal governments that weren't covered under the financial disclosure law. So the state legislature expanded it to include municipal and governments. The village attorney's position was this was a violation of privacy and it would restrict, uh, people wouldn't run for office because they didn't want to divulge their personal finances. So by filing, I was showing the courts and giving support to the legislature that people would in fact file under full financial disclosure. And I'm not a rich guy, so I was trying to also make the point that it's not really about what you're worth. What the law is designed to do is to track your net worth over time, where you're looking for people that are getting money under the table, essentially. And by requiring this full disclosure every year, the media and anybody else can kind of keep an eye on, on what's going on. And then the second part of that equation was, well, that's gonna limit the availability, that's gonna eliminate the candidate pool. And so the second part of that equation is I wanted to figure out a way to expand the candidate pool. And one of the things the village charter does, or the attorneys interpreted to say was, you can't run for mayor and council. You have to pick one race every election cycle and that's it. Well, that's restricted, I thought that was restrictive and I read the charter a different way, that you could run for one or the other, but not at the same time. So in practical terms, you could file to run, and that's another thing. There's two different elections. You can file to run for mayor in June and campaign all through the summer and the heat and spend all that money. And then the camp, the primary comes in August and you lose in the primary, you're out of luck. Well, there's time between the primary and the filing deadline for council members that you could switch races. And they were going, no, you can't do it. So again, best way to do it was to challenge it. So there was no primary. So I physically resigned the office that week of the primary and filed a run for council. And I took my paperwork over to the bank and I got my new, Charles Collins for council account set up and I brought it back and boom, I was a candidate. They never even challenged me. So now we have a legal precedent that by 2026, you can now go out and file to run for mayor in June, campaign all summer. If you don't make it in the primary, you can then turn around and file for council race. And theoretically, you would start off as the, as the favorite. Would you spend all this money on name recognition? So ultimately, I think it will expand the candidate pool. Well, it'll make government more accessible to people that wanna run.
So tell me more about the financial disclosure. I know that's a new thing, but tell me, if you could explain to us what it is for people that don't know.
I think the best I could give you is give you an example. Financial disclosure isn't about how much you're worth now. It's financial transparency to how your net worth increases over the term of your public service. I can, I'll give you an example. I was a union rep back in the days and, uh, a union supported Danielle Cava for a county commission seat against Linda Bell, who was the Republican incumbent down in South Dayton. Daniella went to Columbia or her husband's a successful physician with a concierge practice. They're, they're, by any definition, they're a comfortable family. But during the campaign, one of the hits against Daniella was that she was worth so much money and that, you know, whatever, for whatever reason, that was the hit they were getting. And after the election, even the Herald made a point that she was the richest person on the council. And I, I know, don't quote me, but I wanna say it was between one and three million at the time. So this last election cycle, Daniella's campaign finance form, which is the expanded one that counties are required to file, had her somewhere around, I think, 13 or 15 million dollars over her career. Now, this is an entire career within public service. Why didn't she get that hit this time? Because the critics had the campaign documents or had the financial disclosure documents dating back to when she first was elected. And if you read it, it's, it's a tomb, it's 35. Mine was four pages, hers is 35 pages or, or longer. Every investment, every, whatever she's into is in there. And so you couldn't, opposition couldn't get any traction saying that she's wealthy because it's evident it's not from, it's, has nothing to do with her position as mayor. So, and one said it protects the candidates. On the other, well, we've all heard horror stories, this is Florida. Everybody, people go into office, you know, with a six-figure, with a six-figure net worth and they come out multimillionaires and we never know why. But that's what, that's what the Florida Sunshine Amendment was about. That's why this law is applied to state, county and, and judicial positions since, I think, 71 or whatever the law was started. The hit was it was gonna discourage people from revealing their net worth and we wouldn't get candidates. So I wanted to take it a step further and increase the opportunity for candidates, increase the pool by creating, making it easier or more financially viable to run for office. And then one of the problems with the elections on Key Biscayne is we run a mayor's race and a council race, it's not done as one. So part of this transparency is, okay, let's say we get, that we are gonna get people willing to run, but the way the village of Key Biscayne sets up their elections is you gotta run for mayor all summer and spend all that time and money. And then if you lose the mayor's race, you can't run for council. So you've gotta pick one race or the other each election cycle. And my belief is if you knew that you could run for mayor, spend all that time and money, invest it in the mayor's race, and if you lose in the primary, you come in third in a primary, then you could switch over to council race and leverage that name recognition and that effort and run for council. And people would be more inclined to take the risk of running for mayor if there was a sort of a backup plan. So that didn't exist. We had some disagreements with the village attorney and the, and the clerk. And so I also challenged that law. That was part of the process of filing for mayor. And in August, when the primary was due, I physically resigned the office, resigned the race for mayor. I refiled for council. I took the paperwork next door, got my bank, um, campaign account set up, brought that back. The clerk, the clerk, the clerk filed my documents. There was never, it just, the whole controversy evaporated. So now we have a legal precedent in 2026. You could run for, file to run for mayor, come in third or not make the primary, switch over to the council race and you still sit on council. And the fact of the matter is, it's a weak mayor. There's no huge advantage to being the mayor. You get to appoint positions, but actually, you got a lot more work to do and you still only get one vote. So if you wanna impact public policy, this makes it a lot, a lot easier. I don't know if it's easy, it's hard, but at least it expands the opportunities. And all you're sacrificing is transparency. Or you're not sacrificing it, all you're sacrificing is your, I didn't even say sacrificing, the cost of running for public office is public transparency.
Okay, so moving on to the village. What are some of the important issues the village is facing today?
The biggest issue in this particular election is gonna be the big dig.
What is the big dig for those that don't know?
The big dig is a, uh, is the village's answer to sea level rise, I guess is the best way to frame it. The, we've got NOAA predictions that since 20, since 1990, the sea level is rising at a predictable rate. So the good news is, well, no, we know where the sea level will be in 100 years. The bad news is, it says we're gonna be under 10 feet of water. So somewhere along that line, we need to do something. And what the village has decided to do is, we're, first thing we're gonna do is address rainwater and build what is reportedly somewhere between a 350 million and $750 million stormwater system to pump out the rainwater as quickly, well, that's the other debate, how quickly? Two inches an hour. My position is, I'm not convinced this is the best ROI available, return on investment available to address that ultimate problem of 11 feet sea level rise in 100 years. Uh, I'd like to step back and look at the bigger picture about how we can really look at that long-term. And I understand their, their version of long-term is 50 years. But I'm talking a true existential threat. If we're gonna be underwater at some point, it's lights out. I mean, we could go to, one of two ways. We could either do sort of a, um, New Orleans approach and, um, build up the, the, build up the walls and they, they use, uh, what do they call them out there?
Levy, was it?
Levis and, well, anyway, yes, that's, lack of a better word. They essentially build a cofferdam. They surround the city with walls and levees and then they pump as fast as they can. Realistically, that's the only way we would save the village in the long run, two or three generations. But the practical aspect is, the state and the county aren't gonna protect the parks like that. They're just gonna let them flood. So what are we left with, you know? One, um, 1.4 square miles in the middle of a, of a bay? That's not gonna, that's not a viable solution. So what else can we do? Well, we can put it off as long as we can by building like the Keys do. We can elevate all the homes, we can raise the streets, we can raise the buildings and just let the water flood through. In those last years, it's gonna be the spring tides and the storm surges that are gonna, you know, is gonna be the first effects. And at least we can postpone that, maybe a whole generation, by building smarter, not harder. Creating a $350 million plan now that'll only handle rainwater just seems like literally shoveling sand against the tide. I wanna see if there's a, a larger, a longer-term solution to, to postponing the inevitable. You could argue, I actually wanna spend more than half a billion, but I'm not spending it on rainwater.
So you mentioned the New Orleans model approach of, of the walls. What about the water that comes from underneath the key?
Well, part of the, the plan that they're putting forward now has to do with increasing the capacity of the surface water. It hasn't been designed, the New Orleans models are designed to constantly pump the groundwater as well as the surface water. So as I mentioned before, I may wanna, I, I wanna take a larger look at this, that how, what other ways can we approach that rising groundwater? And this may include using, uh, the island model, the, the Keys model, where we build the houses up and let the water, it can come up. It's going to impact how long it takes rainwater to drain, but it won't be as critical because the rainwater will not be standing in people's garages like it does now. So this also has the advantage of, long-term, if you, if the chart, if the NOAA schedules are right and this is an inevitability, by raising the island instead of building bigger drains, we will survive longer, or at least we'll push the, push the inevitable out further. And ultimately, the money that would normally go into a very expensive stormwater system can be redirected into more, into structural issues of raising the island, physically raising the roads, the properties, the homes and the buildings, which obviously is not only a longer sustainable solution, but not, um, it doesn't require constant maintenance. And again, this plan is only about rainwater. It's not addressing storm surges or groundwater per se. I mean, it's impacted by the groundwater, but it's not designed to constantly pump down the groundwater. It's only designed to pump off the surface water.
Are there any other issues you think the key is facing today that you'd like to talk about?
I think the other big one that's taken a lot of attention is the issue with the e-bikes and mobility in general. I have a lot of connection to bikes. I was part of the original Everglades Bike Club in the seventies. Went off to University of Florida where I worked as a bike mechanic off-campus. I saw how off-campus was ripping off the students, so I started the on-campus bicycle clinic, student bicycle clinic, which is still there, 70, whatever many years, from 1974. Came back to Miami and the Bike 305 program that the county parks runs was out of my warehouse. So I had a lot of connection to those events. And I still volunteer in Coral Gables for Bike Walk USA, which is the Coral Gables, City of Coral Gables program that, um, we do historical tours once a month. So when it came to the bike mobility issue out here, I'm 72 years old and I don't like kids riding up behind me at night. It scares me. But on the other, other end of it, uh, I like to take a big picture approach that micromobility is gonna be part of our future and that we can't just stonewall it. It really needs to be addressed properly. I think I can bring some solutions to the table. Ultimately, uh, what we see in most of the successful Europeans in South America, all the cities that had addressed it is, it's, it's about lane segregation, that you don't have bicycles with pedestrians, with cars, with baby stroller sort of a thing. Now, do we have the real estate to do it under, right now? No. But are there, are there solutions for like bike corridors or, or bike? Are there other solutions available? I think we, we could look into that. But yes, in the meantime, we're probably gonna have to keep the ban up until we come up with a more permanent solution.
Okay, so the next question is, can you share something with us that the village is doing well, in your eyes?
From 91, when we founded? I think it's been a model of incorporation, that the smaller government, the local government, hyper-local government is a much better model than UMSO, that what's, what, what the county operates, the, uh, what do they call it? Unincorporated municipal service areas, which was the model we were under before. Uh, I was a staff on the other side of this debate in, in the early incorporation effort, that I was a county employee and I, I saw the, the model would impact our unions because you wanted to incorporate and that meant the county unions were gonna lose work, workers. But I also, and this is a rather selfish confession, but I also realized as a union organizer, this would provide more opportunities for the unions, that what these incorporated areas were looking for was better service, which would require more fire and more police and more municipal workers. And then it ultimately, in 10 years, that would translate to larger union memberships. So I took a very proactive approach during the Key Biscayne incorporation so as to not have the unions get involved in a short-term solution of saving a half a dozen jobs on Key Biscayne. And yes, we recognized very early that this is a very good model if you could get away with it. And as it turns out, by the third or fourth incorporation, the county shut it down. But in the interim, you guys, or Key Biscayne, we became the model of the, of the village governance. And I think it's been very successful.
Anything else that comes to mind?
I think we got a great parks department.
So one, one of the main challenges of being in council is working with people with different ideas. You know, people are gonna like your ideas and people are not gonna like your ideas. How, how do you see yourself working with those that oppose your ideas?
Uh, I think the whole point of local government is to have different voices on council. I think it gets pretty boring if everybody's, not boring, it's not efficient if everyone is in lockstep. There's actually a, a business model called the 10-man rule, that if 10 people are at the table and they all agree on the, on the issue, it's the job of the 10th man to take the other position just to vet out what are the negative possibilities. The whole point of governance is, is to arrive at a, a conclusion. And I think the best governments do it in a diplomatic fashion without screaming and yelling and, oh my God, some of the stuff that I've seen. But I think, if nothing else, I think I'm a pragmatic person, that I am able to work towards the goal and not let personalities get in the way.
When elected, or if elected, um, by the time that you finish your term, how would you like to be remembered?
I'd like to be remembered that I survived it. Politics on Key Biscayne can be a blood sport.
It has, it has changed over the years.
It has. But like I said, that, out of that conflict comes the best resolutions.
So now we're go to, to a different set of questions. After a long stressful day, how do you relax?
I'm a retiree on Key Biscayne, there is no long stressful day.
That's a great question, that's a great way to answer the question. Um, regarding the other candidates, how do you feel you stand out? Or what makes you different than the other ones?
What makes me stand out from other candidates is, the only thing I have that really offers me as a part is I do have a lot of experience in counter-government. And part of that experience was, I used to be part of the training team that would train the new county electees as they came on for the Board of County Commissioners. We all start as neophytes, that it's a learning process. It's almost like being on jury duty, that you're presented the facts and you reason them out and you come up with a solution. So I think we've got a team, I don't think anyone stands out as being, as, having unique insights in the sense of, you know, divine, divine intervention on the solutions. But I think that we're all reasoned and I think the only thing I offer as advantages, I hit the ground with a little more experience in the process than maybe some of the others.
Oh, you count, you worked for the county for how long?
35 years to today.
And I think, thank you for your service.
It was ironically, um, I would, there's a bunch of us in the county that had jobs that we would have done for free, but didn't, don't tell anybody. It was like, what I did, I loved it. Some of the guys, like the helicopter guys, the marine patrol guys, some of the fire special duty guys, they're never gonna take a promotion. It's, it's, we love what we did and I, being a sound engineer, your hearing gets worse as you get older. There is a finite, you know, or, I maybe wasn't the most qualified to do that anymore. But I did teach the guys that have taken the place. In fact, we're talking about the parade earlier. Your DJ to this day is the guy that I got started.
No, now, I like to think that the show is more like a, like a light approach to get to know you, but we have some fun-related questions. What is your go-to meal for a last-minute guest for dinner?
Shrimp kebabs on the grill.
A what?
Shrimp kebabs, you know, pineapple shrimp, pineapple shrimp on the grill.
Okay.
Standard, easy, cheap, quick.
I like it, I like it. What do you love most about the key?
Well, it's paradise. There's a, I have this expression, a Wizard of Oz epiphany. For those of you not familiar with the movie, Dorothy goes on a long trip and the end of the movie was, there's no place like home. So for me, the key represents my childhood and my adolescence and the fact that I'm living next to the park. I don't know, it's got this sort of 1970s vibe to it still, despite the fact we're 10 minutes from a major, major crazy city.
That's a closing question, we ask this out of all our guests. What is a perfect weekend for you and your family in the key?
What's my perfect weekend on the key? I spent my career working weekends as an event guy. So for me, the perfect weekend is staying at home and giving the island up to the visitors. So it's sort of a loaded question. But in general, what I, what we like to do is, basically, we do our walks to the lighthouse, we go to have dinner, we watch movies. And when things get too crowded out here, we head to the mainland and, and do the same thing on the mainland. It's, it's, we're old and, well, I'm old and I'm speaking for the espósta. But I'm old and retired and I enjoy chilling out.
I'm with you, I'm with you. It's like, when, when they ask me, what I like is, if I don't have to leave the key, it's, it's the best. it's the best, so. Well, Charles, thank you so much for jumping on the show to give an opportunity for neighbors to get to know you and good luck, you know? And I tell everybody who's running for office, thank you for, for your willingness to serve because it's, it's a lot of work. So, and it takes time and away from your family and, and life. So thank you for.
It's my pleasure, it's a labor of love.